...and to be more computerized for payroll. So the time cards and the punch again will do. The council supervisors will be approving payroll through via email. And so they review it. It'll be calculated, not necessarily by hand, it will be reviewed. But we should have less problems. This is a new implementation. And Margaret's been working very hard, along with Monica Delise, on implementing this new high-tech thumbprint time card chicken. So no more punching the card. Everybody can use a thumbprint. So we're hoping that can go well.
Hi, Chris.
Yes, sir.
Talking about time. Is there an issue with employees coming in late, the hourly employees?
I have not had a problem with that. I knew historically there were some people having some problems, but...
So it's a perfect?
Is it perfect?
No. You say, is it perfect? Everybody has good attendance.
Not, not, nothing in life is perfect.
No.
But I can attest to the public works. I'm using there every morning at 6:45. And everybody has punched in literally before 7 o'clock in the public works. But I haven't had any complaints. But since you touched on it, we have, because we do do merit raises, all departments have been receiving their evaluations for their staff. And that's one of the evaluation components. So we'll see.
Do employees get discipline reaction for being late so many times?
I don't believe there's anything in the policy that speaks to how many times. It is kind of like general to say, you know, you have to be timely. But there's nothing in our insurance policy that says if you're late three times, you get this. There's nothing in the policy.
There should be.
Well, that's something that this council can vote and decide. Or to do so.
There should be, because, I mean, you know, like, come in five minutes, 10 minutes, it doesn't matter. And there should be discipline.
Well, Margaret can speak to the handbook. She probably knows it better than I do. But in the policy, what it says is that it speaks to how, you know, discipline and what is this. But I don't think it has anything in reference to, you know, if you're five minutes late or ten minutes late. It does speak to the fact that you can't punch in so long before.
Right, 15 minutes or so.
But the policy is not that. So we can look at those kinds of policies if we like.
So you said, oh, sorry.
And when you were starting looking at that policy?
Well, we have a new attorney. The last attorney wrote it two years ago, which was Lou. If you want to point out those kinds of things, we can bring those up while we're still doing our budget workshop to address those issues. Or we can have a special workshop just on the handbook, which you really need to adopt it before your fiscal year, October 1.
You, I'm sorry. Let me ask one question on the CDOG. You mentioned the fact that everybody will use their thumbprint. Will that be across the board, including management?
Well, management doesn't clock in, because management's salary. So we're talking about anybody who's an hourly employee. So myself, and for Connie example, I don't punch a clock, because I am self-salaried, unnecessarily hourly. But all hourly employees, yes.
Okay. That's a question I was going to ask. Okay, any other questions concerning, we're looking at the city secretary?
You don't give yourself comp time then, do you?
No, sir.
Perfect.
Or overtime.
So it would just be all people that don't clock in?
Anybody who's salary. We have several employees who are salary. There are salary employees, which don't receive overtime, which don't receive comp time.
How do you keep track of your comp time?
If it allows you at least 40 hours? Oh, she's saying about your microphone. She didn't hear your question?
The question was how do you keep yours full time? You gotta make sure you have 40 hours. If you don't get 40 hours, you get discipline.
Okay, salary employees, historically, in the workforce, do not punch a clock. They don't punch in. So like your chief of police, he doesn't punch in?
I guess what they're going to be asking is, keep track of your time. You just can't take two, three days off whenever you want to, because you're summer time.
Well, anything like that.
Leave half day or leave a day.
If I take, if I take a, well, let's talk about me, I can't tell anybody else. So if I take a vacation day or a sick day, I put in a sheet, just like anybody else puts in a sheet, and it's deducted if I'm a sick day. If I'm going to be working and I leave half a day, typically, I don't take half a day unless I'm taking my time. But I can leave early, because, for example, sometime I play around with people up to 8, 9 o'clock at night, and I start my day at 8 o'clock in the morning. So I can put anywhere from 8 to 10 to 14 hours in a day. But typical staff only puts in about seven and a half hours a day.
So are you responsible for making sure that the other employees do follow the rules on that?
Yes. And hopefully, when it's automated, it'll be a lot quicker and lighter, rather than trying to go through different time cards. One of the things that happens is that they have to come in to time when they have emergencies or a break. They have to come in, punch in, and go forward. The police department has it as well. We started experimenting on them, and they have theirs in their cards, because they're always on duty. So they can clock in literally from their car.
Any other questions? Okay. Moving on to, oh, there's more.
Yes, the next one talks about proposed modifications. So, in my budget memo, here comes the hard part. In the budget memo, we have to be able to reduce something. I'm making a recommendation. You can accept it, amend it, tweak it. It's not perfect. I know staff is not necessarily happy, but we're having some issues. And so one of the things I'm recommending is that we need to think about how much vacation time we are giving staff. If you look at the box of the chart, it says here what they give. For one year, it's 10 days. Two to five, there's 12 days. Six to 10, there's 15 days. And 11 to 12, it's 20 days. And so that works out in hours, however you want to look at it. And so, as we're looking at, this is a liability that I must, that you must carry on your books. It is a liability. And so we need to look at how we can reduce some of our liabilities, what we're going to do. And I know it's a very sensitive subject, but we need to address it. I'm only making a recommendation. My recommendation is somewhere that we need to cap it at 12 days. We do have people who have a lot more days. One of the things that I did negotiate with the police department, and they are a unique animal, but with the police department, they receive even part of their sick time back, where no one else gets sick time back. But that's something I inherited. I asked them that we have to cap it at 600 days. And Connie, 600 days worth of, how much? 600 hours or something?
It's about, we did it today.
About 20 days.
75 days.
75 days. Typically, we're 20 days in a month. And so, that's a liability that will occur. I'm coming up with a bare-bones suggestion. I am all ears, listening, because we have to work this out. And I'm quite sure staff is going to talk to you, they've talked to me. But it is an issue. Okay, so if you just hold that page, just turn over one other page. I have about my star children. I released, I didn't put any names there. Remember, this is not the police department. So anything with the CBA, please do not think about that. But if you look at it, I have about some people who have like 942 hours. That's over six months.
Mr. Turner, how did it accumulate so much?
For example, if you are an 11-year employee, you get 20 days of every anniversary day. You get 20 days. You get 160 hours.
Yes.
And they didn't take it. They haven't taken it. And it's just mounting.
Well, they should have taken it, or else they should have lost it.
But we don't have a use it or lose it policy. We've never had a use your vacations or lose it policy. Yes, ma'am. But it's never been a use it or lose it policy. Vacation is a gift that employee, employer is an employee. We give you a gift of a vacation. And we've been giving this gift, and keep giving this gift. And every year, it's an anniversary, they get it. And think about it as a bonus.
And they deserve it. For, for, after working 10 or 11 years, they deserve four, four weeks.
Yes. Now, these same people, they also risked a lot of comp time. So they took comp time instead of overtime.
But they need to take it. They need to take the four. I think what she's trying to say is that it would take a council change.
A council action.
Council.
To say use it. Now, we tried in the last handbook to say you could take it within 18 months. But they physically have a hard time taking it. It's just kind of like humanly impossible. And then you have the issue of comp time, which they earn and they have to take it. If they can't build up any more comp time if they get past 40 hours. So we were doing better when that vacation, I don't have the answer.
Because I don't want to take away, I mean, because working 10 years or more, they deserve 20 days. For me, they deserve that. But accumulating it, no, I don't agree with that. Don't somebody have any other kind of question?
Like us, like in, when I worked for the government, you could accumulate your sick time. But we necessarily don't have, I mean, we couldn't, we didn't get paid for it. If you retire, or quit your job, or you get fired, whatever, they don't pay you for it.
We don't, we don't pay our employees, other than the police department. They don't, this is not sick time. That's a CBA thing they negotiated before I got here.
So if they quit, or they retire, you pay them your regular time and the sick leave?
For the CBA? Yes, sir. They get a portion of their sick time and all the vacation time. They get a portion, I think 75% of what they have.
Coming from city government, where I came and realized I had a cap, 600 hours. And once we get that 600 hours, we're forced to take it, or we lost it. And use it or lose it now is cap. That was for managing. Now, the hourly people, they had 600 hours. They had to take it, or not, they got paid for it.
Okay, so this is what you call benefited time.
Okay.
This is their earned time. I just can't go make it go away.
Right.
No, I know.
And so, if you, I mean, if you want to say we want to keep this policy as people go in 20, and you can only cover over so many days, was one of the options that we have, and to say, okay, we can't carry over more than one week to have one week, kind of like on the books or something like that. But when I have somebody who has, and as you see on the list, I have somebody who has 942 hours. I have someone that has 641 hours.
Well, sick time is great.
This is vacation, this is all vacation. This is just vacation time.
Okay. That 942 hours earned, you should have that money in a vacation fund?
It's actually in a liability account in the fund that the employee belongs to.
So we actually have cash for that. We don't have blue stuff?
No, it's a liability, and all it's saying, we owe this money.
So we owe, you know, put that in like the savings account fund for you. Because if they made it this year, we would put it in this year for next year. That money is already built up. So when we ran into this problem, they had the money to pay off the people. So if two people, three people quit, you don't have 900, 600, 900, 2,400 hours. You don't have that money in the...
You would have to pay it in a liability. And so that's why we're hoping that we can get the general fund owing the positive, but not the deficit. And we did have a couple occurrences of this year in the police department that they left, and we had to pay them out.
Is this for one year or definite?
The, the report that you have is what they have today and how it works?
No, no, no. I mean, is this 6, 10, dark shaded? Is this doing this for one year, then we go back to the normal?
What, what this is, is the shaded part is, I was saying, stop at 12 days, but it's just a suggestion. And again, as I said, this is a hard decision, but we, we have to address something. I mean, because there's some other hard decisions we have to talk about, staff, such as longevity and things such as that. We're going to get to vacation, but, you know, you don't have to make a vote. There's no voting tonight in workshop. This is for us to discuss. Staff is really concerned. I mean, you know, it affects me too. I mean, I have been here 17 years or 11 years, so I'm not getting 20 days. And the longer I stay, I'm not going to give you more days. But the liability, and if somebody comes out, and if you can look at, somebody who has 900 hours is somebody who's probably going to retire very soon. But if he has 900 hours, and he has an anniversary date, then with his anniversary date, that 942 hours is just increased by 160.
But you got somebody on next page, 1,055.
That's the police department. I know that one.
Oh, that's the police department.
I just took off their names. But there are some others in there, 300, 200. There, it is an issue, and I'm asking for direction of. Maybe we can't cut it all out. We can just slow it down, and you can stop the bleeding. Because if I have a year for us to build up our deficit, to get out the deficit and get on the positive for the general fund, then what we need to be able to do is say, okay. Now, some of these employees on the top four, they're in the water fund. But we don't want to deplete their fund either to get into this issue.
So we can basically do this for one year and go back normal?
You can do whatever the council wants to do.
Are they going to take those 942 hours off?
It would be humiliating. Then that employee can go work, and when to go for six months, and I won't, he could leave tomorrow, and I won't see him till after Christmas. I can't function. We have a lean, lean machine. I can't function without that key employee, because, because he's getting that many days, that means he's pretty much up there. And so it would be hard for me to function without that person for six months solid.
And we don't have a max vacation length for the city? Max you could take at one time or three weeks?
The max, doesn't have a max, but it has to be approved. But I'll approve anything. They have one person who likes to take 30 days. I don't approve 30 days. But the max I'll approve is two weeks. Unless it's something that kind of leave. I don't approve anything more than two weeks.
So should that work in the hiring policy, the saying that max you could take at any one time is two weeks, three weeks, four weeks?
That's something you can put in the policy if you catch it.
So again, I'd like to clarify that the council can look into your preference. There's no action tonight. But look into your preference as far as vacation days, and then also the comp time.
The comp time is set. And with the comp time set, yes. With the comp set, what they do is they take comp time in lieu of overtime. I mean, they get a day off, you know, a day off instead of, which I'm, and it's accumulated time and a half, okay? And so they, they cannot accumulate any more comp time if they have more than 40 on the books. They can't, they have to take that time. But we have to pay them out overtime. Yes, sir.
This year, how much funds did the city pay for all those departed, the city? The partners, whoever?
Well, actually, the first thing we had to do was actually...
Total.
Total rough numbers.
Two officers, I think, two or three.
So it's over, it's excess of $60,000. Now, they didn't get it, they didn't get the 60, because I got to pay the IRS, but we have to pay it. But it was over $60,000 for the police department.
See, then, I think so it's time that, that we tell them on time what's coming up. This is what's coming up, like all councilors thinking about it. It's too many hours at their day. Because, because they, where I work at, I get a month and a half. And guess what? I have to use it. Sick vacation, I have to use it. If not, I'll use it. And, and, and if I lose it, I want to lose it.
And that may address, that may address the new vacation time coming in, the new anniversary. It, it doesn't address what they already have accumulated, and that's off the books. And so, if you want to say nobody else can accumulate this much or whatever, that, that's what's in. We have to address it. One way to say use it or lose it policy, so someone who gets 20 days, they need to understand that they have to use those 20 days. Especially because that person probably has some of the time already, that they have to use it. They're only really, like, you know, maybe four or five is really, really bad. And so we need to look at what we need to do. But I have to stop the bleeding. I need to stop the liability. And officially, when you say that, to pay it out. And I won't know. It's not in my control of when we are going to have to pay it out. It's a matter of when. I don't know when.
My concern is, is if you said that there's crucial employees that really can't afford, work-wise, to let them take of that time.
Well, it's, it's, you know, to have somebody off for six months consecutive, even if they come a month and leave a month and come, we have some pretty big projects coming. But I do perceive that that person could take off through a year. They could take 20 days. And so they no longer can add to their vacation budget that they have to use those days, not that they would lose those previous days. And so you can make a policy, say, well, we have this on the book, it's yours. You can't add anything else to the book. You have to have a use it or lose it policy. And so if they can't take those 20 days in that year, then they lose those days. And that they have a loss of what they already gained.
Mr. Turner, how about if they take those 20 days plus two more weeks, so they can start lowering the 900 hours? You know, like, take the 20 days that they, they're supposed to take, and then somewhere in there add two more weeks?
Not altogether, but...
No, no, no. Like, through the year. Through the year, take six.
It's their time to take, you know, and we just have to get it approved, so that I don't have a problem.
Instead of, we take their four that they're going to get plus...
You have, you have to remember, one of the things that happened is that people saved and banked those days, because they were like holding for retirement. Because we didn't, at that time, we didn't have this four, whatever, four, okay, our, our version of four, okay? We didn't have that. And also, TML has said that, it used to be that, okay, so you retire today officially, but you stayed on the books going forward. TML says, no, if you retire today, this is your last day. You need to be paid out and off the books. And that's when it, it kind of flipped. Because I noticed what they were holding is, because it was kind of like their extra net.
Yeah, well, I would have done the same thing if I would have been allowed to do that. I would have done the same thing, like, related hours like that.
So we can, we can come up with a policy. I'm just saying, we need to come up with something if you want to phase it in. We can do so, especially for those that are going forward. If you're really working hard to save somebody who's been here 11 years, or they, you know, they should still get their time, then we can, you know, come back with a policy that we can do that affects everybody across the board, and maybe a little more fair and equitable. But the bottom line is, I'm not going to keep adding. You already have 900 hours, add 160 hours.
And, and the problem that I see with this is that we, the employees already know. We have been discussing this for three years. And you said in the CBA, when we were doing this. My concern is not how many hours they are accumulating, it's the fact that they have all this bank of hours there, and their rate, their pay rate increases. So the value of those days every year increases, increases. So by the time, I know for a fact that San Antonio had a police officer that got paid a million dollars on vacation.
Because, you know, he may have made some of these days or some of these hours, and he was making $10, $11 an hour. But now, 10 years later, he's making $19 an hour. And so it's a lot different.
You cannot do that. You have to wait, at the time that we pay off on vacation, we have to pay it off at the current rate.
Which is why it's really important for us to say we need to stop the bleeding. Come up with something. If it's a use it or lose it policy, that's fine. If it's a maximum that you can take, it's two months, because 20 days gives them a bonus.
So what Connie's saying, that whatever money they have in the bank, I mean, in that savings, every time you get a raise, that money gets a raise.
Yes, yes.
Regardless if they're making $6 an hour here to $50 per hour. The, the max is going to be at the $50.
That's why I said, I would do the same thing, you know, if I would have, I would have been able to do that, I would have done it.
Which is a line that keeps growing and growing.
The employees, it's...
Yeah, it, it, it depends on retirement. You know, when you come and you, you know, 15 years ago, this was probably really great, because you didn't see it, but here we are, at this rate. We need to, to address it. And so it's a suggestion that we need to be able to address.
I, I really see where we need to have a ceiling on this. You know, the people have already earned it. They've earned it, you can't take away. But I do believe we need to have a ceiling on all of our vacation event. An employee needs to take vacation time. He needs to rest for it, just for his body. So this will force him to take their two weeks or three weeks off. If $600, $300, I don't care, but if they're there max, an employee who works hard for the city, because it's not an easy job, they need to get their time off. And this will force them to take their two weeks, three weeks off. Because I know, I don't want to say I did it, but I took the $600 cash, and I had $300 of vacation, I mean, sick leave. And what I was paid when I left, they just, I smiled, but the city didn't. So it's a lot of money.
And the state has these, again, according to GASN, they have this policy to where you can only get paid for vacation, not for sick leave, not for comp time, at the time that you depart from the city. We don't have that kind of policy here. If they have sick leave, vacation, comp time, whatever they have accumulated through the years, they get paid off on all of them. So that's...
Not sick.
Not sick. But that was changed three years ago.
So they only pay 50% of their sick leave?
At least department, yes. No, most staff. Everybody else, no.
I haven't really had any sense of where the pay, sick leave, the comp time, or... A lot of people pay 100% or 50% sick leave. Whether it's like a put-in to affect. Sick leave's a benefit. Sick leave's a, a gift. And a lot of people take comp time, and they don't have to get sick.
So they don't have any sick leave dates, is that what you're saying?
No, ma'am. You get 10, 10 sick days and two personal days, is what you get. Everybody gets that. But it doesn't roll over for many years. If you don't use your sick time and your personal time, the next year, you lose it. But that doesn't work for vacation. And sick leave is, and those kind of dates are given at our fiscal year, and the other, your vacation time is given at your end of...
But the sick leave shouldn't be use it or lose it?
The sick leave right now is use it or lose it.
Sick?
Sick, your sick dates are use it or lose it.
People accumulate it, because, you know, you never know what's going to happen. You get a heart attack or whatever, and you have to be out a few months, and you only have 20 days, you start not getting a paycheck.
Well, a lot of it changed when they had that FMLA.
Okay, but I want to say, we have family leave, but I want to say, return to leave, the long-term sick is family leave, is unpaid time.
And that's why a lot of people built their sick leave up before they wouldn't take FMLA, to lose all that money, to then be back in, like you have a pandemic, or something like that. But with this new FMLA, that's just a protection to keep your job.
Yes, it means I have to maintain your position, or similar position, and you can come back. But it's unpaid. So when a young lady goes return to leave, it's unpaid leave.
Is there a policy still enforced that if someone has, say, for instance, cancer, the other employees can't pitch in those hours, certain hours?
You can donate days to different employees. We have that policy in place, yes.
We're funding sick leave.
But it's only sick time. You can't volunteer for vacation, yes, we've had that. And we, we've had an occasion, people have donated different days. The police department is really nice about that, because they have a lot of days.
I was going to ask that same question. Maybe you all still have that?
Yes, ma'am, we do. So again, if I can hear it with the mayor said, I'm not asking for any action. I'm asking for some thoughts. for some thoughts. If you would like to give me direction or your attorney a direction, that we can have a special workshop just on personal handbook and those kind of things. She hasn't had a chance to dissect it, I know she has a copy. We can do that, but I want to give you that number and have that information for you. Is that okay?
On what?
That we can, if you all want to have us one of the workshops, because I got you booked till the end of August.
For what?
For, to deal with the handbook and to make different things and changes and things such as that, if you wanna be able to do that.
Handbook, yes.
I was gonna ask, is there any employees that wanna say something about this, about the years of service? Any input from any employees?
Margaret may have a comment. Margaret, do you have a comment?
We said no. Okay. Well, I think it would be a good idea for the council to have that special, or add it to a workshop that might be a good bit.
What, what we could do is just have one of the workshops that we've have scheduled just to be on the handbook and give the attorney an idea. So that while we're on this subject here, I may, if I wanna look at vacation time, we will look at sick time. I believe councilman or teacher mentioned tardiness and the number of tardiness.
Right.
So those are kind of the policies she indicated, or any other policies or things that you all want to look at or...
Hiring policies to a new handbook, any...
Yes, we have the hiring policy that we can, I think it's a matrix or something that we call...
Are you gonna give us a new handbook that we can read over or we got it on the internet?
I don't know if I have policies on the internet, but I can give you a copy of the handbook.
I would need a copy of...
Yes, we can give you the updated copy, we'll make sure that hiring practices and the matrix that you all approved is in there. Is that okay? Yes.
Now, can you clear up, you have a highlight, an employee who accumulates successfully six hundred hours, will not earn additional leave until the accumulated hours have been taken and the ending balance is eighty hours. That doesn't make sense to me.
What we were trying to say is that, let's say that we cap it at six hundred and sometimes it's kind of, so we cap it at six hundred and then this employee who already decided to keep them the twenty days, instead of giving them the twenty days to their bucket, just pay them out the twenty days. So the liability's not there.
Mr. Turner, in a lot of jobs, they don't pay them the whole amount, the payment like a certain percentage.